Welcome to the Town of Garner Town Council Work Session of September 26th. And what a special work session we have tonight. We're going to work, we're going to vote, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Garner Economic Development Council. It's just fantastic, all the stuff that's going on. Let's start out with the official business of calling the roll. I'm going to call on our deputy clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Gupta.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Thank you. And we begin by adopting the agenda that's been published. Many of our participants have looked at it, our council members studied it. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Matthews and seconded by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. And as far as I know, there are no special presentations tonight. There will see many things presented to us later on. And I will, we do have a public hearing. This is carryover from previous council meetings. And I always like to read the little disclaimer here for the record about public hearings. And tonight's public hearing is a legislative hearing which does not require sworn testimony. However, a person who's interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a brief presentation, followed by the applicant and other persons who wish to comment on the item will then be recognized to speak. Council requests groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group. This case, the first case, the only case, was continued from the September 3rd and September 17th regular council meetings. While it may be unusual for council to conduct a public hearing and take action during a work session, it is permissible under state law and the council meeting rules of procedures and has been properly publicized. If that puts your mind at ease, it's all legit. A little different, but all legit. And of course, the one that we have before us is a conditional, tier one conditional rezoning request for Gateway 540. Our emergency backup presenter this evening, with the out of town of our planning director and our assistant planning director, our assistant town manager, Mr. John Hodges, will step up and give us a little presentation, particularly about the changes, the adjustments that were made since the last time we took a look at this. Mr. Hodges?
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. As was mentioned, this is a continuation for CZ 24002. For anyone who is not familiar with the, the location of the project, we just wanted to give you an orientation that this is at 540 Highway 50 and Cleveland School Road. The details there of the site, approximately 97.15 acres are there on the screen. There is, are some additional, some updated conditions that have been presented since the last meeting, and those are in your packet tonight, so we will pull those up. There is a red line version with edits, as well as a clean version in your packet. So we'll mention that the, the use table did not have any changes to it. There were some changes to the way that the area was defined, and to simplify that, it is referring to an appendix map that has been added at the end of the packet. And that clarifies, further clarifies that presentation. There are some changes in language, just to help clarify the uses that in number three that are allowed in the commercial services pod. And then there are some additional changes in language, just to try to clarify the amount of flex space use that was discussed previously. We also provided council some additional information upon request that the, regarding the flex space that is not allowed use in the commercial pod. And there was a question regarding the difference between flex and warehouse. And so just for clarification, the primary use of warehousing and distribution is not allowed in any of this zoning area, or any of this, this rezoning case. One of the uses that is allowed, though, is this use, the flex space, other like industrial manufacturing, warehousing, or transportation use is not listed. This use is kept into the rezoning request because these are uses that are often secondary or ancillary uses that are needed by some of the types of businesses that we are hoping to attract to this site. And so we needed a way for those ancillary uses to be able to be allowed. However, within that use, the sub-use of flex space, there was some concern about whether or not the flex space would be taken as an opportunity to do large amounts of flex space. So a condition was added or offered that the flex space sub-portion of this condition would be limited to 25% of the area of the, of the area for development. And so that is further clarification about the flex space. So we glad to answer any questions you have, or provide any additional information we can. And again, Mr. Trezenberg is on as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hodges. And let's start with Mr. Matthews and run down the council row here to see if there's any other questions or comments or clarification about the changes that we've made. Mr. Matthews?
I don't have nothing, Mr. Mayor. I've read through this, and it seems like everything that was brought up or discussed has been dealt with by staff and to my satisfaction anyway.
Thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I appreciate the change of the condition about the number one, 25% to start, not at the day of the zoning if approved, but also at the certificate of occupancy for the first building in that corridor, the commercial, the commercial corridor. Also, I believe it was clarified in regards to the property in front of there that borders both Highway 50 and Cleveland School Road. The setback in measuring number one and 300 foots, it gives them flexibility for those types of developments. So I do appreciate that being addressed.
Thank you very much. Ms. Behringer, comments, questions? Mr. Dellinger?
Um, no questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, I did not mention specifically, but have pulled up the map that, that shows the 300-foot distance that Mr. Singleton referenced. So that revised the layout that defines the employment pod and the commercial services pod is here on the screen. Happy to answer any other questions. Mr. Trezenberg is available. And also, the development team is also here, if there are questions that you have for them.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation this evening?
I think they're, yeah.
We just have, I have some other comments.
If you-
We do not have a, if you agree with this, I'd like to address the actual topic.
Certainly. Yes, sir. This is the time for you. If you would approach the podium and identify yourself with your name and address and speak into the microphone, because it's not just us here to hear, but we have thousands, maybe millions of home, home viewers. So.
I think you exaggerate a little bit. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Kurt Berger with Foxfield Land Partners at 1045 Holt Ridge Drive in Apex. We greatly, we appreciate greatly the continued feedback on the conditions and the opportunity to work together to refine the conditions for this case. Based upon the last meeting, each of our team and the planning staff prepared a draft of updated set of conditions. When we exchanged those conditions, we learned that from a substantive standpoint, we were all on the same page. We think it is a testament to the very constructive dialogue that the council had with respect to the conditions. What we're saying is, we heard you, they heard you, staff, we got together, and it wasn't a really big, it wasn't a whole lot of changes that we made. We clarified some points, we got together, and it turns out we weren't far apart. And we actually never have been. We've always been on this, trying to do what you want for the Gateway 540. I think the trickiest part is when you finally get there, ooh, what if this, and what if that. So we appreciate the time and effort that you all put in and staff has put in to help us get to where we believe is a really good place. To that end, the conditions have been updated, as, as were pointed out, to require, these are the four things that we think that we did. We required a minimum depth of the commercial services pod to 300 feet. To clarify that, the boundary of the commercial services pod starts 600 feet from the interchange and extends around the corner of our Cleveland School Road frontage, as depicted on the exhibit. There was some confusion, if you recall, about the exhibit didn't match the verbiage. We revised the 10-year window for flex space use limits to be 10 years from the first CO instead of simply the zoning, and that was the logical request and something that we're happy to do. And we added a condition to limit the amount of commercial services uses on the site to 25% of the overall site. We're optimistic that these conditions, which mirrored staffs, are reflective of the council's expectations, and we look forward to moving this case to the planning commission if it's, if it's your, your desire. So thank you for the opportunity to allow us to fine tune some of the discrepancies. And again, we believe that we're in lockstep with the, with the staff. So thank you.
Excellent. And thank you while you're there. I think I'll take this opportunity to start at the other end of council members for another opportunity, or for questions or comments, before we see if there are any other people signed up to speak tonight. So saying that, Mr. Vance, comments or questions for either staff or the applicant?
Yes, I would just say that appreciate the cooperation and the working together to come to this point in this whole process. I think that, as I mentioned at the first meeting, that we were closer than what we thought, and it appears that we were able to meet some, meet all of the demands that were made and clarify a lot of questions. Thank you, thank you all to the town and also to the town staff and also to the development team.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Yes, thank you for the time and the collaboration. I think I'm reading it right. The biggest challenge seemed to be the commercial pod, and then allowing its growth, but also maintaining a fixed boundary. And the 25% gross is an interesting workaround to that. But I thought that was, if I'm interpreting it correctly, it's kind of an ingenious way to allow that space to grow. So yeah, just thanks for your patience and time and working with everyone.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Behringer.
I just, one comment, collaboration is a wonderful thing, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Singleton, other thoughts, questions?
Appreciate you all listening to us last week and, and the meet before that too, and refining and, you know, kind of funneling these thoughts and suggestions to what we have now with these conditions. So appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Matthews?
Just a quick comment. You know, we opened 540, we were at ribbon cutting the other day, and, and as we were riding and looking at things, and looking at all these intersections, and it's, and it's kind of unique that we're starting it down there. And what I hope is going to be the beginning of many, all the way through that corridor, across the road, down Old Stage, and so on. We've learned a lot from this. Can we learn more? Probably, and on the coming projects. But hopefully, with your cooperation, staff working to make this thing happen. Like I said, it's going to be fun to move this thing forward and see what comes behind you guys. And so not only we opened the road, you're opening up this whole new world of commercial to us. So thank you very much for putting up with us and, and working together and talking together. And Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to move this project forward.
Thanks for your comments, and thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's cooperation. And as, as I mentioned to you, I think early on, the more flexibility for the town, it's going to benefit the town. So your economic development folks now have, will then have something to, yeah, we can, we can, we can go after that job. And that's really the, the lens that we were collaborating with, with staff, and we, I think we're there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You may have a seat. And I will ask our town attorney, has there been any individuals who have signed up to speak?
All of the other individuals are with the applicant's team.
Okay. Do any of them wish to speak?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Hard to top when Mr. Berger just did. Exactly. In that case, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask council members for a motion related to this commission.
I move to refer to the planning commission for consistency review and recommendation.
And there's a motion by Mr. Vance, and a second by Mr. Matthews, to refer this on to the planning commission for its other public hearing and for other review and analysis. So all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Apparently, that's unanimous. It passes, and we will move on to the next step, to the planning commission, which is coming up next month, very soon. Excellent. Thank you for all your patience. Thank all the council members for their detailed study of one of our first major tier one kind of open-ended zoning things. We think this is a harbinger of great things to come. We're so excited to work with your team on this stuff and move ahead. That being said, there will be a brief recess right now, as we do a little furniture rearranging and chair rearranging. Let's call it 10 minutes. Well, let's certainly be in our new seats by 6:30, if at all possible.
6:30.
Thank you. Thank you. And we reconvene after the short recess for the exciting second half, second act, as you might say. We're so glad to have our GEDC board members with us tonight for this important occasion. And we'll just look around the room here, we have Megan.
Kymara Heh.
That's the one, yes. And Jeff, what's your last name, Mr. Swain?
Yes, that's it.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
You got it.
And coming around to Buck Kennedy, just like the good old days, you sitting up here making some decisions.
Thank you, Mayor.
Glad to have you here, and of course, Bill Moyer, thank you for being here. So, those are our representatives from GEDC this evening.
Mayor, can I just say, one of our members is took ill today, so he's not here. And also, don't forget, your member of town council is also on the Board of Directors, Councilman Vance.
He's paying twice as much today.
Yes, yes, thank you, that's right. Thank you for my, because when he walked in, he had on his town council hat, and I kind of got that image in my mind. Clearly, he's changed his hat to wear both simultaneously, GEDC and town council. We're very fortunate to have a liaison member like that on the GEDC, number one, a council member, and number two, a man with experience and background and patience of Mr. Vance. So, thank you very much on that. That being said, I think I'm pretty quickly going to pass the microphone over to Mr. Nate Grover, our Economic Development Director, who's going to give us some orientation and maybe introduce another speaker, another presenter.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity tonight to present the final report for the northeast area, northeast Gateway area, small area study, is a mouthful. As you know, from the updates I've provided over the last year, we've been working on this study a little bit over a year from start to finish, so we are extremely excited tonight to be able to deliver the final product. We've had three in-person stakeholder meetings, and then, I don't even want to begin to count the countless phone calls and separate calls and group calls that we've had to get to where we are, it's definitely a labor of love, but we're really excited to get here. Also, very appreciative of the funding that council provided for GEDC to be able to work on this study, so that was very appreciated and needed. And without further delay, since the mayor did a great job of recognizing our GEDC board members, especially Mr. Vance times two, I will introduce Sarah Sinatra with Inspire Placemaking, Vice President here in the North Carolina office.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. Again, my name is Sarah Sinatra, I'm Vice President with Inspire Placemaking. It was an absolute pleasure to work with your community on this project, and I'll go through where we are. First, I want to thank the board. It was, like Nate had mentioned, a labor of love. We worked very hard with the community and with the board to talk through some of the challenges. And while I was really hoping, when we started this project, to be able to tell you that we've got, you know, this site, and it's going to yield this incredible amount of development and so forth, we've had some constraints, and we're presenting to you tonight some of those constraints, because we really feel like it's really important for you to be aware moving forward with the project and moving forward with the site as you continue to market it, as you continue to get applications, either surrounding the property or on the property, some of the challenges. Don't want to say that it's all doom and gloom, but the idea is to get, give you the full scope of the challenges with that property, so it can be developed in a really functional way and do good things for the town of Garner. As everybody knows, the study area, and when we first started the project, 540 was planned, and as we all know, we are now opened, and it's really exciting to think about where Garner is positioned and where this study area is clearly positioned. The project started through an RFP process. And just to kind of bring you back to what was part of the components of that RFP, was to develop a compelling case for landowners, developers, and other partners to study the area, for the study area to emerge as a regional employment area, and this was described in Garner Forward. So, again, it's trying to implement portions of your comprehensive plan. We held the three stakeholder workshops that Nate had mentioned. We completed a market analysis, and these were part of your, again, the RFP. We completed a land use analysis identifying the appropriate mix of uses. And then, the transportation component, and I'm going to be talking a lot about the transportation component as part of this, because the impact of the improvements that DOT has installed have really affected the site. So, we evaluated options for access on Joan Sausage Road. We evaluated the alternative access to Creech, and again, this was within the RFP. Transportation analysis to evaluate maximum development options, describe zoning and land use potential changes, then focus on some implementation strategies. So, when we started to look through this project, we focused on four main objectives, to complete the market analysis, to focus on compatible development. When you look at the aerial and of the existing development, and there's two residential areas or two residential developments that were surrounding the property, we wanted to keep that in mind, also alignment with Garner Forward, and then, again, identifying the transportation opportunities and constraints. And then, through the process, we held, just like Nate had mentioned, numerous meetings, lots of virtual calls, meetings, design workshops, talked to DOT about some of the challenges, and then presented a final project plan. So, what I wanted to talk about is, if you looked at that last map, where we showed kind of the existing developments, since that time, there are a number of developments that have also been approved. And so, once we started to add them to the overall map, and I can kind of toggle back and forth between this map and a following that gives a little bit more detail on the actual projects that are developed, or that are under, either under approval or have been approved already. When you start looking at this map, and you see you've got the natural constraints, so there's flood plain, there's an actual creek that would be very challenging to cross in order to get over to Creech Road. So, Creech Road is highlighted on here, and that was part of the process, is to identify. Are there opportunities to actually access Creech Road from this site to provide an alternative form of access? And once we started to see that not only was there the creeks that would cause substantial infrastructure improvements, but also, when you look at the neighboring developments that have been approved, and I can click to the next slide that shows what those projects are, and which ones are under review, have been approved or under construction, it adds another layer of constraints. If I go back to, oops, the, let me just go back one to this slide, what I'm going to spend a lot of time kind of chatting about mostly later on, is about the transportation constraints. So, if you look at the slide where it says 300 feet, so that's the access, that's the distance from where the diverging diamond interchange off-ramp ends, and where Martin Branch access begins. So, NC DOT prefers to have 1,000 feet. They installed the diverging diamond interchange and have left the property, the access to the property with a 300-foot distance. So, this was the main point of discussion with DOT, and as you'll see later on, when we talk about implementation and our recommendations, it is to strongly suggest to DOT that they have left this condition, and they will need to kind of work with the town and with GEDC and any development potential on this property to be able to provide access to the property. Another challenge I wanted to bring up, or condition really, it's not really a challenge, is the land use and the zoning. So, the existing zoning on the property is residential, and it would be prudent for the town to really weigh any potential re-zonings that could entitle any of the other parcels further, before you decide what you want to do with the property. Because of how constrained the intersection is, any new development opportunities, any more intense development opportunities will ultimately affect that, the access on Joan Sausage and Martin Branch Road. So, that being said, it's going to be important for the town to evaluate any property that comes in, and to make sure, because the GEDC obviously has control of a large portion of the property, and to consider that in mind with any kind of potential changes that would come in. Another portion of the analysis was completing a market analysis. The full document that we provided to you also included an appendix. That appendix has the full detail of the market analysis plus the reports that we drew our information from. The market analysis focused on the targeted industries, which were advanced manufacturing, life sciences, and technology. The methodology that we utilized for that was both a quantitative and qualitative analysis, that was to review the Garner Forward Plan and the associated reports that are, again, in your appendix. The qualitative analysis was to interview partner economic development organizations, understand the local real estate market, and talk to real estate and development professionals to make sure that we were understanding the full scope of what this property could really attract. And when we did that, we also did a SWOT analysis, and again, this is in your report as well. This does not take into account the constraints on the site, so this is purely a market-based analysis, and it identified that the conditions appear to be generally favorable for development of the site, based on the research that was done and the analysis. It aligns with GEDC's targeted industries. But we've listed out the, what would need to happen in order for the site to be developed in that fashion. More in-depth conversations with the developer who has an option on the property, the northern portion of the property of the 62 acres, that would be something really important to do, to focus on the due diligence, the environmental constraints of the potential site, of the site, review case studies, coordination with the town further. And when I'm saying the town, it's because the GEDC parcel needs to be coordinated further with the town as well, with any new development applications that come in, because, like I mentioned, any new development does affect this property. So, when we took all that information between the traffic analysis, the land use analysis, and the market study, we started to develop master plan options. We spent a lot of time working with GEDC and staff to understand really the two components and the two alternatives that we provided, when we certainly took into account the targeted industries as well. And so, because there was, like I mentioned, a developer, an interested developer has an option on a large portion of the site, just north of the GEDC parcel, we spoke to them also and met with them about what their proposed project would yield and what they were interested in. Both of these scenarios, whether it's Alternative 1 or Alternative 2, we've proposed, we did, we ran the traffic analysis, our traffic subconsultant ran the traffic analysis, to make sure that the intersection and the roadway conditions would function, and that was really important to make sure that we were meeting those standards. So, in order to do so, it would yield a warehouse and workforce housing, and then that would really be part of what we're calling the Phase 1. Because the site was all, the full scope of the acreage, we included the underlying land uses and zoning that already, as part of Phase 2, that, without modifying those, so they're kind of grayed out in this example, because we're really focused on Phase 1. If there was further development on Phase 2, it would have to take out of Phase 1 because of the traffic, the traffic needs. Alternative 2 was a very different concept, and it was really focusing on the public realm. It's focusing on the neighborhoods surrounding the property. When we go back and we look at what part of the scope of the RFP, and that was to have sensitivity to the existing neighboring properties, we assumed that it was one residential neighborhood. When we started to identify that there had been a number of approvals of surrounding properties, we really wanted to be sensitive to that, and added more residential to this as well. as well. So, Phase 2, I'm sorry, Alternative 2 would include more residential live-work units, assisted living, workforce housing, but also, I want to point out that we were also considering the Class A office, residential, and retail. And a lot of that would be, and the community building, a lot of that would be incorporated within the residential components to have more of a neighborhood. The idea is what, from a traffic engineering standpoint, we talk about is internal capture, meaning that people would be able to potentially, if they're working in, say, the office space, which is included in this, in Phase 1, which would be focused where the target industries would potentially go, that they could potentially live and work. The reason why we have the live-work units, so people can live and work, to have the less traffic on the network in the hope that they would be staying more within that site. Again, I was mentioning that we were going to keep going back to the transportation analysis, and I wanted to just dive a little bit further into that. When we look at the aerial and we focus on Joan Sausage and Martin Branch Road, we understand that it's constrained, you know, this is, in effect, created a cul-de-sac kind of condition. Having one point of access at Joan Sausage, you need to have that full intersection in order to develop the property. And, you know, we know that the intention is to develop this property, so, again, it's imploring the town and GEDC to talk to DOT further to make sure that that full intersection is definitely secured. The, what I mentioned before about the spacing, it's about 300 feet, Martin Branch is, we looked at a number of different options there and see if there was other ways to connect. But like I said, having that spacing, again, causes challenges. And then, the access to Creech Road is not, is not possible due to the existing, the approved developments and the natural features. I mean, you could always try to address it that way through Creech, but it would be extremely, extremely challenging. So, we were trying to find different options, and then, we're really feeling that the, talking to DOT about that, the opportunity to put in a full intersection, even though it's less than the ideal of 1,000 feet. There are many conditions that have less than 1,000 feet with full intersections that allow the development. Both alternatives, we've asked our traffic consultant to run the trip generation. Clearly, the trip generation in Alternative 1 was less, but again, the focus is on the internal capture within, in Option 2. Further, the goal is to be considering, you know, that both options, like I mentioned, result in a functioning intersection, and that was the goal. The next step would be on implementation, either choosing to further explore one of the paths that we described, or developing another option. Determining required infrastructure, I want to point out here, we didn't really talk about right-of-way acquisition, but right-of-way, we did in the report, I didn't talk about it right now in my presentation, but right-of-way acquisition is a paramount issue and needs to be addressed in securing that right-of-way intersection for roadway improvements and extensions of utilities. Potentially having a small group within the town or GEDC to focus on the real estate and economic development that are tied in with local decision-makers. Evaluate, and that really goes back to the DOT, so that might be focusing on a small group to discuss that with DOT also. Evaluate potential development partners, and then position the property for any kind of Phase 1 development. Design improvements along Martin Branch and Tharrington, considering rezoning properties to commercial or planned development if you're comfortable with the product and you're also able to secure that full intersection at Joan Sausage. So, like I mentioned, our goal was to, you know, not to deliver all the bad news, but to be able to tell you the full, the full scope of the challenges of this site, to be able to make informed decisions moving forward, and to have those, the full information to have discussions with DOT. So, I really appreciate the opportunity and be happy to talk anything further about the report.
Excellent. That's a lot of information. Y'all have spent a lot of time studying, a lot of information generated there. Let me ask the council members, at this point, do you have any particular questions for our presenter here? Mr. Vance, we'll start at your end.
I have no questions. I'll wait if I have any.
Mr. Dellinger?
Right now.
Okay. Mr. Send some questions at this point.
So, these uses that you have for both Alternative 1 and 2, now, is that the uses that the developer who has the option on the property has come up with, or is it something that they've done in conjunction with you all? I mean, the reason I ask is, I mean, the second alternative's got a lot of things, but they're kind of busy. I mean, we've got this guy, they've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 different uses. I mean, they're kind of busy.
So, Alternative 1 was described by the developer who has an option on the property. And Option 2 was the proposal that our team had described and came up with based on what the traffic can support, and what was really the appropriate mix of uses in order to have more of a live-work environment within Garner.
Just one man's opinion, it's kind of busy. Just my opinion. I mean, I know you have here, Phase 1 shows, you know, shows housing and warehouse, and the legend has different uses also. Just looks too busy. I would combine a couple of those uses. Just one man's opinion. I mean, it's, you've got workforce units, you've got live-work housing, single-family cottages, I mean, let's combine something and we're going to focus on more affordable, then make them all affordable or whatever. This is one man's opinion. If that's what we're focusing on, that's just a lot of uses.
I just want to point out that this is not, this is
Concept.
Not an actual site plan, right? So, the idea is that it's conceptual, and a lot of things could be moved around in a way. The idea is that we wanted to provide that variety of housing that was described within Garner Forward as well. So, it was trying to be sensitive to the existing residential conditions, providing some additional density that was needed in order to support some of the workforce housing as well.
I understand, and that's in Garner Forward, but, I mean, sometimes you just instead of having a little this, a little of that, that's combined to make more of one or the other. It's just one man's opinion. We're, I mean, we're, it's like we dropped a bunch of, thinking of all these colorful on the key, like we dropped a bunch of gumdrops on the floor, and we're trying to assign a use to each one of them. We dropped a bunch of M&amp;M's for different colors. It's Gray, it's one Gray's opinion. I mean, if you're going to focus on something, then cut the uses down and make half the uses, and then focus, you can focus on workforce, focus on it, or live-work housing, just don't mix so, and we're mixing a whole lot of stuff. Just one man's opinion.
Mr. Matthews?
I had an alternative 2, as I looked at it, and I agree with Gray, you know, I think this is a great opportunity here possibly for some type of workforce housing for, I know our group is studying on that, and it'd be a good location for it also. But I would agree to cut it down, it's, you can't, we can't do everything for everybody, but as we often talk about for our fire department, or police department, or teachers and what have you, those in that category, this would be, if it was done correctly, would, a couple of them could be either apartments or condos and some cluster homes, or one, just a couple, and it would fit well in there, and I think it'd be a great opportunity that we could look at.
Excellent, excellent. Maybe this is a good time to ask Mr. Grover to join at the podium, just, and help us get a little feedback from the GEDC specifically as related to the small group study that we've been through, what it is, what it's meant to be, next steps, and a little input maybe from your board members as well. This is a brainstorming session, we're trying to not make a decision, there's not a vote coming up, we're just trying to get some ideas of what you've learned, what your board has learned, what opinions you have, what kind of thoughts you have, as we kind of pass the baton from the consultants back to the GEDC, who will be working through the town council, planning commission, et cetera. Just give us the big picture overview, thoughts, organization, and input from your, from your board members as well.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll provide a couple of comments before I kick it over to Chairman Swain to just provide some input on the board's behalf, so, and other members as well. So, as we worked on this study, looking at this area, I had a couple of goals in mind personally for this, and number one was just to keep in mind, or keep top of mind, that the important thing that we were doing here was studying the area to define the constraints, to see, you know, what could go here. You know, when you drive by it, you look at it, you think, okay, that looks like some vacant land, you know, could something go there? So, we enacted this study to identify, okay, what are the constraints? Obviously, you know, we know the transportation constraints, to really look at, you know, what could go here, and then specifically, as related to the comp plan, the comprehensive plan, looking at, you know, what type of mix of employment center, and then possibly some workforce housing could go in there. So, those have kind of just been some of our main themes. And like I said, I'll kick it over to Chairman Swain so that he can kind of provide his input. I know, I see Mr. Vance looking at me over there, too. I know he probably wants to provide some feedback, so. Mr. Swain?
Certainly. I think the two things to focus on, I think, as far as the board is concerned, and others on the board can chime in, but the findings on page 31, and then, of course, the next steps, which are still up on the board. And I think probably the board's interest will be looking for some kind of third option between Alternative 1 and Alternative 2. And I would also point out that in the findings, it speaks to having in-depth conversations with the interested development company that already has an option on 62 acres, which is a significant portion of the entire site. And so, I look forward to working with staff to pursue the findings and to also pay close attention to the next steps that are outlined. And I think also Sarah talked to a very important element, which is what we do if indeed there are rezoning proposals that come in, you know, before, before we have finished the follow-up work. So, I think those are the, in summary, the points I would leave you with. So, focus on the findings and on next steps, and I think the board is anxious to follow up on this report with the staff, and to find out a little more if you have other questions and comments, so that we would be guided accordingly.
Perfect, yeah. So, Mr. Vance, yeah?
Yes, I would just say that Jeff is, my mind is in line with my thinking, thinking toward the next steps, but from a personal standpoint, I would like to hear what the council has to say about what you've seen and provide your input. As Sarah has so eloquently briefed, we have two alternatives, which are really for points for us to look at. We've heard several points of views, and it will help with the development of the possible, the hybrid, hybrid alternative, as Mr. Swain has already alluded to. So, we'd just like to hear what the council would like to say about what's been provided, and ask any questions while you have them. Have us all here together.
Excellent, yeah. This is kind of a brainstorming situation here, as we take the first look at this data and the constraints, the strengths and weaknesses, need everybody's input as we go along. Let's just run down the line here again. We'll start with Ms. Behringer.
Yeah, I would also agree with Mr. Singleton and Mr. Matthews that it, on first glance, Alternative 2 looks very busy to me. I wanted to hear what everybody else had to say, but it's a little over the top initially.
Okay, yeah, these are all ideas, and that's what we're here to kick around. Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, I think what is sort of misleading the thought a little bit is the sort of presentation of what looks like a site plan, and really, it should be described more as like a Tier 1. This is the bad mix of things we want in here, the particular configuration is not really known. So, I think that's kind of anchored the thought, is that it is busy because it's a busy picture, but it's actually the most flexible option, right? It can, it adds the most diversity in terms of mix of uses. And I think that's kind of what Alternative 2 is more speaking to, rather than a list of this number of cottages and that kind of thing. So, I think maybe revising the presentation of Alternative 2 a little bit, sort of with some visuals, that'd be worse. But just as a use of like mixed residential, commercial percentages, you know, and keeping in mind, it's very flexible. Sort of comments, and then I'll come back to another question. You know, it's good to see this level of analysis on these large parcels. We need to do more of it because it really demonstrates what's possible when you kind of get a lot of people around the table to say, what are all the different perspectives on this piece of property? You know, you have council perspective, staff perspective, finance, economic development, really trying to put all those brains around what's best for the town. Everybody has a different interest, but when you put them all together, they come together. So, we need kind of more of this on these larger projects. Anything over 60 or 80 acres needs to sort of have this sort of picking apart of opportunity. I think the constraints are very clear, it's always this balance of market and transportation. That's sort of like what is coming through on a lot of projects we see, and so, again, that level of analysis there. I had just a question on the transportation and the constraints. Was there, obviously, there was a lot of discussion about Mark Branch and Tharrington. Was there ever any discussion about extending Tharrington and creating a new intersection?
Yes, there was, and I believe it may be in some of the full detail within the appendices, but there was an evaluation of Tharrington and how that connects to, and I believe the road was Calabash. We looked at some opportunities there, and it was very challenging to connect. There was, there was, there was issues along where it connects to, across from the Amazon entrance as well. So, we looked at, we looked at a number of different options. We brainstormed with the team very many times on this, and there was
A lot of good options.
A lot of issues, especially then when you start talking about right-of-way acquisition as well, because then we're really talking about things that we don't have control over, and so, we were very cautious not to present something that could just truly not be developed in a way because of the level of right-of-way acquisition.
So, were the constraints more on the right-of-way acquisition, like kind of hedging on that, or were they more technical with regards to intersections?
We felt that your better option was to talk to, to see where you can get with that full intersection at DOT. That was easier, not easier, but just less, the other options required so much acquisition from different property owners. Once we start adding in all those additional property owners, it really becomes unknown.
Yeah, and it gives me a lot of pause because I was talking to my mom the other day, and she had to go down Highway 42 and 40 for the first time. She said, "It's a nightmare down there." And part of the issue with 40 and 42 is all these drives and intersections so close to the interstate, and so, it gives me, it'd be interesting to see a model of how that intersection might work, because it is, once you get that close to the interstate, with all that traffic, and then you're talking 20, 30 years in the future when you've got magical flyover, you know, and you've got all this other traffic coming from the hospital and White Oak, and so, a lot of stuff going on, a lot of things to juggle, but I appreciate the information and the kind of consultation with so many folks. That's all I've got right now.
If I may, Mayor, I would just comment to Councilman Dellinger that, you know, we looked at, we looked at the possibility of having an intersection further to the southwest. Of course, you quickly, we want, we want to also respect the residents, homeowners at Hunter's Mark, and furthermore, information or experience was that many of the current property owners in that area have chosen not to participate in the public meetings, and so, therefore, obviously, then you look at the question of, well, do we want to do some eminent domain for purposes of want to do some eminent domain for purposes of, of creating a different intersection with Joan Sausage? And we pretty quickly put that aside. So, that is why the focus comes back to the current intersection. And of course, one of those next steps is really to focus on not only coming up with a, with a land use plan that we think would work, but, but also focusing further on NC DOT, about a solution to give us the kind of signalization that is really required to do anything. And one could argue that, given DOT's current position, when they did the diverging diamond, and with their policy, they basically took the value of this entire site, because they're not agreeing on the firsthand to having a full intersection, full, you know, three-phase intersection. So, then, then you could pose the question to NC DOT, well, all right, now what? Are you willing to recompense all the property owners for the value of their property? Anyhow, I could go on, but you know me. Thank you.
A lot of challenges, to say the least. Yeah, this, this is a great discussion. Mr. Gruber, or other members of the commission that you'd like to hear from, or other?
Absolutely, and I just want to touch on one thing Mr. Dellinger's questioning there before I kick it over to Ms. Puma Reho here to fill in the rest of the GDC comments, that, you know, we continue to collaborate with DOT. DOT has this information now. We've had a call this week.
They just haven't agreed with us yet.
So, you know how the process works, but I just did want to confirm that we continue to work with them, and, and the fact that they do have this now. So, they understand, you know, what, what we're trying to do. So, Ms. Puma Reho?
I would just, again, what Chairman Swain has said, that we believe that there's a hybrid here. We believe that phase two, yeah, it's a little overwhelming upon a first initial glance, but that working with the council, the developer who has the option, and our GDC, that we feel certain, and we are moving quickly, and we'll be reaching out to you guys very soon to help us with that alternate three hybrid.
Mr. Moore?
Oh, I heard Ms. Behringer say it earlier, collaboration. And I believe that's the most important thing, right? We've got, we've identified, I think through this whole project, it did exactly what we wanted it to, and identify hurdles that we might have to overcome, and, and one of the biggest ones being the traffic study, something that, in my world, I've never knew anything about. I know more about traffic studies than I ever wanted to. But it's done exactly what we needed it to do, and I have heard every council member talk about option two. I've not heard anybody talk about option one, so I at least think we're kind of got the ship pointed in a direction, and we'll eventually get to what that option three looks like through collaboration, through the town, through GEDC, through the property owners got the, the bigger parcel there. So, hopefully, we'll come back to council with something that will make Garner proud, and make everyone in this room proud.
If this was an easy site to have developed, it probably would have been developed long before now. It's, it's a very, for development, it's a steep sloping site. It's, from one side, from the top end to the bottom end, is almost a hundred-foot drop. And one of the reasons I mentioned that is, I, I know there's, there's some emphasis on affordable housing and workforce housing, and, and this may be too far into the weeds, but if you're thinking about having homes next to each other on a ten percent slope, there's going to be a lot of developmental issues that the, that just getting in basic infrastructure, so it's going to run up the value, put the cost. I'm not sure how much workforce, that's for people beyond, I, I can just pontificate, but that's going to be a critical part. It would seem to me that the, that it would be easier for development, for housing on the higher, flatter ground, and, and the more from the, the warehousing, if, if that's still a part of it, on, on the backside, on the, on the lower side, because there's, there's still going to be some earth moving to create flat spaces. But when, when you got, if you're cutting in a number of roofs, and, and stacking houses in there, there's going to be a lot of retaining walls, in my opinion. So, it's, it's just building costs that you may just, when you're looking out on a surface like this, you don't see that what's already been mentioned is, if, if we were trying to, when we try to purchase right-of-way, it, it, we may run into some challenges there, and does the town have the legal authority to secure right-of-way for a purpose that is, is not necessary to the public good, but they could say that's for economic development? And, and I don't know those league, I don't know that part, but it's, it is a, they asked for some of my comments early on, and I, I think it was easy for us to look for the silver bullet. But it's, 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 it's not a lead bullet, but it's somewhere in between. It's a tough, it's a tough site. And that's, that's, that's the good and the bad and the ugly of it. It's, it's a challenging place, but it'll be fun making this happen.
Now, that's attitude, that's attitude we're looking for here, the positive proactive, it's going to be fun. It's, it's a challenge. I think that's
Not everybody, and it could complicate it, or perhaps did a little bit with, to begin with, we thought we had a consultant, and we had GEDC. Then, all of a sudden, we got a third party, got a developer. And then, then how, how do you not compromise them and, 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 and the consultant? But I think it's still a good thing that we got a consultant, because that's going to be somebody else with the, with, with good ideas.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if no one else has any further questions, yeah, Mr. Singleton?
I have a comment I would, you know, suggest, or as you consider, I would remove assisting living as an option. The reason being is because of the number of first responder calls fire departments got to run, and what we want the fire truck on out there in a single entrance area, and making numerous calls, you know, because I'm on a database. I don't think the assisted living, I don't think that's the best alternative for that. I think the E District may have some assisted living built into that project. So, I would, I'd say that's a suggestion to remove that.
Yes, sir. And we've had those, those conversations that, you know, ultimately lie on fire trucks, like at least two, two areas of entry, and we only have one here, so we know that's problematic. So, and, and we had talked about that, like Chairman Swain had said, about looking at creating another kind of joint opening to the south, just for first responders. And we're still kind of just in this, just gray area of trying to figure out where DOT is going to, you know, let us put that signal in, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to give a little feedback from some of our staff. I know, of course, Mr. Gruber's economic development, our planning staff is with us virtually somewhere, engineer staff is here in the building, and Mr. Hodges' observations, comments?
Well, I first just want to thank the GDC for taking this on as a partner to the council and leading this, and to Mr. Gruber for his leadership in working together with the GDC, the council, and the staff. I hope, in addition to the, the work product that you see tonight, I hope that everybody sees that this is the type of work that we envision, and the type of ways we envision that GDC could add value after its initial big job that it had back in the day was accomplished, and we started looking for what is the next phase of the GDC's work. And I think tonight is a really good example of the, the type of work and the type of, of benefit that GDC can bring to the, the council, and work as an extension of council on economic development efforts. So, thank you to the GDC, and thank you to Mr. Gruber for his great leadership on this project.
Let me second that, that accolade to the GEDC. The, the council to, to do all the studies that you've done would be almost impossible with the other things we have to do. So, you are the perfect subcommittee, I might say. You're the one who's been spending the time under Mr. Gruber's leadership, with the help from our consultants, planning staff. This is a huge process. As Mr. Kennedy said, if it were easy, it would have already been done. It ain't easy. It ain't going to get much easier. Even, even the consultants say you got a lot of challenges here. So, it, it does take a lot of input, and we're not here to make a decision, but I just want to reinforce what Mr. Hodges said. Thank you, GEDC. You got all the glory days of getting the, getting the big deal in here and getting the land. Now, you're, now you're earning your pay. You're grinding it out on this one. You're going to take some lumps, you're going to spend some sleepless nights. We really appreciate what you're doing. This is extremely important to all of us. We're so grateful to have you with the talent that we have on that GDC, our, our planning staff who are with us in spirit here tonight. You know, they, they spend a lot of time, a lot of time ahead. That being said, are there any particular next steps, or other comments from staff, our attorney, our town manager?
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of GEDC. It's a pleasure for everyone to be here this evening, and to have a report on this important opportunity for the town, and to also recognize the partnership between the town and GEDC on this important opportunity. From a process standpoint, it sounds like there's interest from GEDC, and potentially the council, to look at what, what we're calling a third option, or a third alternative, that really looks at some of the benefits and strengths of option alternative one and alternative two. So, it, it sounds like, based on the discussion and feedback from this evening, there's an opportunity to do some more work, and potentially bring back a third alternative that, that looks to address some of the questions and concerns that are posed by alternative one and two, and to bring that back for further discussion and review before the report is finalized. And so, I would encourage both the town council and the board members of GEDC to consider that as a next step. Once that work is completed, and both bodies are in agreement with what a third alternative looks like, I would encourage the GEDC then to finalize the report, working with our consultant team and Mr. Gruber as well, and then take action at their level to approve the report, and recommend that it come before council for final approval, to be used in any other planning documents and planning opportunities for any sort of development or projects that would be in this area of town. So, from a process standpoint, those would be a few next steps I would recommend.
And there will be many next steps. And, and the idea is that GEDC brings back to the council some ideas, some other questions, a request for further guidance, just looking this way, here's some possible solutions. I guess at the end of the day, what we'd really like to see is, is giving, giving us some direction, this kind of transportation plan, this kind of big picture, what do we do with all the, the smaller landholder, property owners in between? That's the kind of guidance we look to you for, as, as we work together to, to plan a general direction, and then get more specific. It's not a choice between A and B. We, we don't have a developer with a master plan, silver bullet. It's going to take a dozen lead bullets to, to kill this elephant, not, not one, one single bullet. It's going to take a lot. So, let's keep working together, let's, let's keep pushing.
Mayor, one other item I would recommend to both the town and GEDC is our continued work and conversations with DOT on the signal needed for this area, and really trying to come together and compromise and collaborate on a solution that helps address the traffic impacts for trying to develop this particular area as well.
Clearly, between the traffic issues and the elevation issues, we have lots of challenges. We have lots of challenges. Mr. Dellinger?
This is a, a sort of a general question. I'll, I'll pose it to the town manager. How do we systematize this type of analysis? In maybe a shorter way, to make this sort of part of the discussion and analysis of other large projects. We've sort of done this piecemeal with Creech Road, we've centered it with South Garner area, and it seems like going through this whole process, looking at traffic and looking at market, is something that has opened the eyes of a lot of folks to different perspectives. So, the kind of the question is, how do we learn more from this than what's here? And sort of when we have big projects that are coming before us, get this type of, maybe not as deep into the intersection numbers and that kind of thing, but at least get the, all these different perspectives on these projects, to kind of get these sort of, almost, and also an economic development impact analysis, right, of, of certain types of projects. What sort of, off the hip, your, your thoughts on how we could add to what we do from this work?
So, I, I think that, to your point, Mr. Dellinger, we've had some really good examples of a framework for us to do the review and analysis. So, whether it was the, the work we did on Creech Road, working with our, our engineering department, and Ms. Harrison, and one of the discussions that we've had with Mr. Gruber and Mr. Hodges is, how do we be able to create a framework of economic development or development impact analysis as part of the review, especially for some of the bigger projects in town? So, our work is to take what we've seen as successes, or, you know, things that are working as far as providing a bigger picture and bigger understanding, and be able to use that and replicate that in other work and analysis. So, when information comes to the council about a master plan for an area, about a specific development, that we are more or less using the same work of, framework of information and providing that to council to get that fuller picture, so that we understand not only the planning implications, but we also understand things like the traffic implications, and, and how that's going to impact transportation systems. We better understand the impact on cost of services, which we've done that, that work as well. So, we have worked really hard over the last several months to put together the different pieces of this, and now our task is to put them all together in a framework that provides the information in a way that keeps, gives council the information that you need to make informed decisions.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. It is all about the process. It is about the decision-making process and tools. Thanks for continuing to develop those.
Mr. Mayor, could I come back to, to a couple of the comments that Town Manager Miller made, and I would refer us all to page thirty-one, which is the findings, which do talk to some of the process that's already been mentioned here in the last couple of minutes, but adoption of a joint future development vision by the larger controlling property interests. The larger controlling property interests are those acres that are now, as has been mentioned, an option to a private development company, and the GEDC, which also has, has real estate holdings directly adjacent to this, to the sixty-two acres, I believe, is the largest. So, I think one of our most immediate next steps at GEDC, which can change, obviously, but will be to, as these findings suggest, will be to have some serious conversations with the development company that does have the option to that largest piece of land. So, I don't want to, I don't want to miss that step, because that step, to me, is, is the essential next step to determine whether we really do have the ability to create a, a hybrid or third option, at least in the shortest term possible. So, I just relieve with that thought. And the other point, and I don't know whether it's been clear or not, but the consulting firm that prepared this report has completed their contract. So, this is their report. It is a report that we have obviously received. We have not adopted it, but from here on, it will be a matter for GEDC, town staff, to do whatever further planning is necessary, and/or to authorize, at GEDC, to authorize another contract for some further site planning, which I, which we haven't discussed at all. I'm just sort of laying out the possible things that can occur next. But Inspire has finished their work, for which we thank them, and thank Sarah for being here tonight. And one of our other team members would have been here but for the hurricane, since he is an Orlando resident, and was far better to be at home with his family.
Hopefully, he's watching at home right now from Orlando, if he has power. So, I haven't heard from my mother, but I'm assuming that he has power.
Anyway, those, those were just a couple of my closing thoughts, and I thank the town council and the mayor for having us in this joint discussion, which may well be, you know, something to be looking at in the future as other opportunities present themselves. So, I thank you all very much.
Absolutely. Thanks for your service there. Mr. Gruber?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, thank you. My closing comments- Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you. My closing comments will be a little bit shorter just because Mr. Swain hit on a couple of those points there. So, thank you for that.
No, you didn't monopolize it anyway.
You did a good job for me. So, I just want to, you know, before I kind of close it out, thank GEDC. I monopolized a lot of their time. I guarantee you that every time they saw an email from me, it was, oh, what are we doing next? Every group call that we had was followed up by at least two other calls with Chairman Swain. So, his numbers are multiplied by three. But absolutely, we could not have done this in a vacuum without their help. So, I just want them to know how appreciative I am of their time to get to where we are. So, like I said at the beginning, this is a labor of love. This has been fun. This has been exciting. It's been challenging. There's been some head scratching moments. But like Mr. Kennedy said, I've had fun. I've enjoyed it. In fact, looking at planning as a whole, I've had so much fun that I enrolled in a master's program in planning just to better understand what's going on here. So, I wish I'd taken my transportation planning class last semester instead of right now. But the coursework that I'm working on, it's like, oh, okay, yeah, I just learned that. So, I just, again, want to thank them from the bottom of my heart, just show my appreciation for their time. And also, too, I know next steps were talked about. So, tonight, we're going to celebrate this, you know, getting the study to the finish line. We're going to take a breath tonight. There's no rest for the weary. We already have our follow-up meeting scheduled for next week where everyone's going to be in attendance to talk about, okay, the plan was delivered tonight. Here was the feedback from the discussion, and then moving forward. So, you'll hear future updates from me and my quarterly updates, and I'm sure in between then, to let you know the progress that we're making. But we'll be sure to keep you updated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Clearly, this is the passing of the baton. As Mr. Swain has said, the consultant's work is done. We have to have some closing comments from Inspire, some inspirational closing comments.
I also realize, too, I forgot to thank the consultant team, which is top of my list there, too. So, again, I want to thank Sarah. Sarah's been with us every step of the way. And then, like Mr. Swain mentioned, Inspire's president, George Kramer, who's in Orlando. And you maybe just heard that I made a reference to my mother. I did that because my mother lives in Orlando. So, the fact that I've not got a text from her saying I'm without power tells me George has power. So...
Thank you all so much. It's been a real pleasure working with the team. Like I started staying in the beginning, this was challenging and we didn't want to present, you know, we went into this with hopes that we were going to come out with this phenomenal plan that was going to, you know, take it to market immediately. But, you know, as we go through a planning process, sometimes we have to take some of the ugly, too. And we recognize that there are some challenges. And that was really our role, is to take the data and provide you with the full scope of the issues. So, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. It's been a pleasure working with the town.
Thank you very much. And we're fortunate to have on our council, Mr. Singleton, Ms. Behringer in particular, with extended service here as council members. They have learned that Rome was not built in a day. It's patience. It's baby steps. This is a serious step. Thank you for working with us.
Thank you so much.
And that being said...
If I may just say a few words in reference to this whole process, I would like to say there's a lot, a lot of work is, I will not repeat everything that's been said, but a lot of work was done behind the scenes. A lot of the council didn't see a lot of things, but there was a tremendous amount of work that was going on throughout to get us to this point here. And I just want to reach out and say thank you to the board of directors and also to Nate Groover, who was keeping us on top of things and keeping us moving through the process to get us to this point where we were able to make some alternatives and look at some potential recommendations. And also to Inspire for being patient with us and working through this whole process with us. It has really been a team effort and all the work is not missed. It's really appreciated.
So, I will interpret your positive responses, your signing up for the next leg of this journey, too, right?
Oh, well, yes, sir.
There you go. That's what I wanted to hear. That's great. We're in good hands. Thank you very much for what you've done and what you will be doing coming soon. So, thank you. With that, we'll close that portion of the meeting, which was a great discussion of the smaller area study. We'll move along to our manager reports and the rest of our business here. And you're welcome to stay. Or if you need to go, that's okay, too. You're welcome to stay with us. If you need to run, I understand you might want to go home and check the gas on your generator and see if the water's running in the basement yet. And that's okay, too. But thank you for attending. We'll move along now with manager reports, attorney reports, council reports, that kind of stuff.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, before you is your pending agenda or items for the October meetings. Just want to highlight a few, few things that we've got scheduled. First, a reminder that we have a special meeting on October 1st, our quasi judicial training provided by our legal department here at town that will be held upstairs in the training room at 6:00. So, just wanted to remind council about that special meeting. Our first regular meeting is our October 8th meeting. We've got one public hearing from the 3412 and 3508 Benson Road. This is continued from our September 3rd meeting. And then, we have a few other items of old and new business. Homestead at Bryan Farm, also 3412 and 3508 Benson Road. And also bringing back to council some updates on the Lake Benson master plan work, specifically the work around the future of the boathouse and what options are available. This will be an opportunity to get some feedback and guidance from council on this particular project. Looking ahead to the October 22nd regular meeting, right now, we have tentatively scheduled our commitment to civility resolution to be presented to council by the league. And so, we're excited to have that. We've got a few things for, under consent, which are sort of standard items as we start thinking about the end of the calendar year regarding our meeting schedule and holiday schedule. Also, we have several public hearings before us. The first one is an annexation, 2311 Parkway Drive. This was a continuation from the September 3rd meeting. We've also got Jürgen Park, Thompson Business Part II and Garner Industrial 6. And potentially, we'll have a closed session on the 22nd as well. And then, the work session this month, we have a lot of Tuesdays in October. So, our last meeting this month is our work session on the 29th. We have tentatively scheduled Wake County Public Schools to come in and provide an update on their strategic plan. We also have a few other items. One is an update on downtown parking projects and opportunities. We'll be talking about that. Also, the Garner Fire Rescue Department will be presenting a fire station location study. This is information that we asked them to work on for, especially in light of the merger, as we think about planning for capital in the future. So, they've completed that work. We've almost finalized it. And it will be ready for presentation to council at the end of October. And then, we just have our regular reports going to our work session and potentially a closed session with that meeting as well. So, that, those are all the items we have on the pending agenda. If you also recall, we typically review the development activity map as well. There have not been any new items added to that map since the last meeting. So, we'll just hold off on that until our next work session. And if any new items are made available, we'll go over those with council as well. So, happy to answer any questions that council may have this evening.
Questions for Town Manager?
Yes. The Jürgen Road, not Jürgen Road, I'm sorry, the Jürgen Park Plan, is that updated here on the development activity map?
In what, in what way, Mr. Singleton? Has it been included?
Can we see it? I mean, can we see it before the meeting, the Jürgen Park?
Certainly. This is more of a zoning issue to make sure that everything is zoned properly because the whole property was not zoned appropriately for the project.
Okay. So, this is not where we're going to get shown where they're at now with a 95% drawing?
No. This is an issue regarding rezoning for the property that we need to do. Certainly, certainly if there's something available, I can ask our Parks and Rec team to show anything. But at this point, this was just an issue regarding the zoning that needed to be addressed.
Okay. I just finally got to it on the development side. I just know anything different than what we're looking at right now. It's on the activity. I just didn't know if there's anything different.
There's not anything different to present to council.
Right. Just making sure, make sure we get plenty of heads up. Up to date, whenever that starts, this would be the most expensive project we've ever done. So, we do need to get an eye on it before we, you know, I don't want to be surprised when it's, oh, your agenda's here, and here it is. So, anyway, just thank you.
Okay. So, that concludes manager's report. We're good there? All right. Well, let's move right along to attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the quasi judicial training next week, I just want to alert you that the Board of Adjustment members will be joining us as we'll talk about some of the quasi judicial hearings that they conduct as well, as well as staff. So, just wanted you to be aware. And we will be doing that upstairs in the training room.
And that's all?
That's all for me this evening.
All right. All right. Well, let's jump into council reports. And let's start with Mr. Vance. We haven't called on him enough tonight to see if you have any particular report you'd like to make.
I'd just like to mention that we will have a affordable house, housing task force meeting on the 30th. And just wanted to make everyone aware about that. It's from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on the 30th. And it's open to the public for those who would like to come in and be a part and listen to, listen to us go through the process.
Yeah. Thank you for your work on that. Very important task force. Mr. Dallinger, reports?
Nothing to note.
Ms. Behringer. Well, you did have a art committee meeting, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me.
I was so excited about it. My wife went. I have to ask about it.
Yes, we did have a public art committee meeting. And we have begun the process of creating art wrapped to go on the utility cabinets at the parking lot into the fire station. And we have tentative approval for perhaps painting a couple of fire hydrants around town and making them a little brighter. And we took a lot of recommendations for a mural on the side of the Gearworks building. And we'll discuss that this coming week at the DGA meeting.
Excellent. Excellent. Progress is being made.
Progress is definitely being made.
There was enthusiasm for public art. Wasn't there?
There was very much. So, we had more attendance this time than we've had before.
All right. Sounds good. Mr. Singleton?
I want to thank Ms. Harrison, she's already left, for getting back so quick. I had made some, pointed out some things on the striping, on the repair of the finished project. And I appreciate her getting back so quick. Also, they can put a rising on an adjusting ring for a manhole cover at Penny Street. So, they can make some adjustments.
We appreciate that, Mr. Singleton. We appreciate, we appreciate that a lot.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. I mean, when you do these projects and you pay, even if you break it into sections and people ride on the fresh asphalt, it covers your striping. This isn't connecting the dots, it's connecting the stripes. So, I appreciate her getting back so quick. I know that Ms. Miller had sent out an update to everyone. So, I appreciate that. I also appreciate how quick the folks get on when I email or send a notice violation in for hog grass. A lot of times, it's commercial uses. And I'll get an email back usually pretty quick. I mean, they'll get on it and get on out there. I did one a couple weeks ago. Not only did they put in there, they put two more out there. They saw that were pretty obvious. So, I appreciate their work in addressing those nuisances usually. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We do have a great staff, don't we? Mr. Matthews?
Just when, Mr. Mayor, when we went out for the ribbon cutting the other day, Ms. Behringer and myself were riding in the, what I refer to as the buddy mobile. But we did have a lot of interest when we pulled down there. And it was great to have the Garner marching band playing the music. And ROTC did an outstanding job for that. So, between your car and the band and ROTC, we did quite well down there for that meeting.
The band and the color guard definitely stole the show.
They really did.
Let me say again, Garner Magnet High School, ROTC, color guard, and the band was tremendous.
And one other item, as it was coming back in, our nearby community to the southwest of us, they like to put their signs everywhere. And right at the Costco, that intersection, we know this side of 1010 is Garner. What is the possibility that we can get one, our green sign that says, welcome to Garner, a Purple Heart Community, right there at that intersection? Where does Garner start and where does Fuquay end?
All America City.
Yeah. And Garner starts where it looks the best. And we've got the Costco and everything to the right. But we need one of our nice green signs, you know what I'm talking about, with that Purple Heart Community. Let them know a little bit about that.
We need to add All America City to that as well.
Yeah.
Well, I'm pleased, Mr. Matthews, to share this is a project that Public Works is undertaking. So, they've actually gone out there to look at where there are opportunities to install signage, also looking at areas where we need to replace some signs that might be faded and those kind of things. So, it's a process in the works. I will check in with our Public Works Director, Mr. Jones, and find out the exact timeline, but it's underway.
Perfect answer. Thank you.
I've got a couple really bad faded signs I report to them. Not the Garner signs. I'm talking about other signs. I saw this weekend, I threw by it. God, no, I can't believe that everyone passes these signs and no one turns them in. But anyway, I'll turn them in.
That one looks good in front of Lowe's there that's coming into Garner. Soon as it come off that bridge at New Greenwood, that's...
We've been trying, we've been, had worked sometime for the welcome to Garner sign out in that area. And that never has, has ever come to fruition.
The location that had been identified, we could not work out easement and utility issues. So, planning is looking at alternatives for either a standalone or maybe something that we could do in conjunction with the development in the area.
Please, I know we'll do this, but there's a town down east of us. And gosh, they put some really nice signs on the highway, and they look great. And then, they cut about 10 to 20 feet in front of it, and then cut the grass behind or beside it. And they still haven't. It's been up for six weeks. The grass is three foot tall all around. I think, good Lord, folks, come on now. If you have, if you have the ability to do what you did, cut all the grass. It's so tall in the front that you can't see it. Come on now. Think out the consequences of your actions. No, it's not us. And then, I thought sometime could the flowers grow up with the one on at Jürgen and 70, or not Jürgen Mechanical and 70. But they're flowers. At least they're blooming and looking pretty. They're about three foot tall grass. I sometimes wonder. And I also appreciate talking to Tall Grass. I mean, one of the issues I mentioned was the median on the Divergent Diamonds. If you've been by there, I don't know if the grass has been cut. Maybe more than once. So, I turned it in to staffs looking to see where DOT does that or who's responsible for that because it does not look very good as you come off that exit ramp. And who's responsible, we don't know.
The little things count, don't they?
Put a welcome to town sign. Good gosh, make it look nice. Look at this sign right in front of us. Look how well manicured that is.
Yeah. We can do a lot with Photoshop, can't we?
Well, I don't think that's Photoshop. I think if we drive by and look at it, it's going to look pretty much like that.
Yeah, it really does look good. Our Public Works staff does a great, great job of keeping this going, even though they have to go out and put back all that mulch that washed away in the five inches of rain. But we salvaged most of it. They'll put it back. It'll all work out. Any other observation, closing comments?
Time to go home is a strikeout.
Time to go home. Does that mean we don't have a closed session?
We do not.
And that means I will accept the motion that was just made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second, all in favor of a motion to adjourn, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed by nay. And if you say nay, you can stay. If not, we'll go home. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.